Call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Alberto Paratori.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Art Mahoney.
Rocco Limetone.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, October 22nd and Tuesday, November 26th, which is before Thanksgiving? Yeah, okay. We have one set of minutes to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 27th with very, very minor amendments. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, just for you guys to understand how tonight is going to work. The first item of business is we have two decisions. Those are applications that this board has already reviewed. We've already heard comments from neighbors on these two. We just had to have our attorney write up a decision for us, so we're going to go through those first. Then we have public hearings. Those are applications that this board has already reviewed, but now we want to hear from any neighbors if there's any issues we should be aware of. And then the last part is reviews, and those are applications that we may or may not have already seen, but most of them are new applications. And so it gives this board an opportunity to get through what applicants are asking for, make sure we understand it before we ask for neighbor comments. There are no neighbor comments on any reviews tonight. Neighbors will be noticed and given the opportunity to speak on those at the appropriate time. So let's start with item number one, Appeal 4101 Gabriella Rose, LTD or Florries, Jamie Florrie, 1997 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 76-foot front yard variance, three-foot side yard variance for proposed vacuum station, a 67-foot front yard and six-foot side yard variance for an air station, a 10-foot side yard variance for a cooler, a 10-foot side yard variance for an ice chest, a 10-foot side yard variance for a propane cage, and a 12% maximum lot coverage variance pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So there's no public hearing to open. I just would ask if any board member wants to read the decision on this one.
Okay, this is Appeal number 4101, requesting Gabriella Rose, LTD, requesting a 76-foot front yard variance and a three-foot side yard variance from a proposed vacuum station, and a 67-foot front yard variance and a six-foot side yard variance for an air station, a 10-foot side yard variance for a cooler, and a 10-foot side yard variance for an ice chest, a 10-foot side yard variance for a proposed propane cage, and a 12% maximum lot coverage variance from the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance with variances. The property is located at 1977 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas the applicant operates in existing gas station and convenience store, and whereas due to increase in business from the recent economic activity nearby, the applicant is requesting variances to expand its operation. And whereas this is an unlisted action under SECRA, the planning board was the lead agency in the coordinated review, and the planning board voted in favor of a negative declaration in its August 20th, 2024 meeting. And whereas the planning board also approved a site plan amendment to its August 20th, 2024 meeting. And whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 19th, 2024. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 25th, 2024 and closed it at its August 27th, 2024 meeting. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will continue its current use and it is located in a commercial corridor, the desired result cannot be achieved by any other means due to the size of the property without impacting the ability of the business to operate. The variances are substantial and has worked with town staff to minimize them as much as possible. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Gabriella Rose, LTD Florries for a 76-foot front yard variance and a three-foot side yard variance from a proposed vacuum station, a 67-foot front yard variance and a six-foot side yard variance for an air station, a 10-foot side yard variance for a cooler, and a 10-foot side yard variance for an ice chest, a 10-foot side yard variance for a proposed propane cage, and a 12-foot maximum lot coverage variance from the schedule of bulk regulation for the zoning ordinance subject to the following. One, compliance with all conditions imposed by the planning board as part of its site plan amendment approval. Two, the property owner to secure off-site parking for employees of the business subject to the approval of the town attorney and town engineer. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Myself, aye. So the motion carries for this one. Okay, item number two, Appeal 4117, Christine Delsavick, 124 Sandy Pines Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot height and front yard variance for an existing 58-foot high fence pursuant to Section 194-98 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Again, we already reviewed this, had a public hearing. I do want to add just one thing to the record on this one is that I did do a site visit on this one, and the applicant told us that there were multiple properties in the legends that had this type of fence, and I saw two, and I drove through the development. There's one right at the beginning on St. Andrews and Riviera, right on the, St. Andrews there, so it's on the pretty main road. And then there was one down the road from him. I think the number, it's very hard to read the number of the house, but I think it was 60, where the wrought iron fence was in between brick. So it was a little overdone, but it was beautiful work that was done on that property. But those are the only two that I found. This I found, kind of made his property look kind of institutional, like a jail. It was kind of really weird. So I still have concerns about this, but I know there's a court issue here and there's other issues here. So I know the neighbors expressed concern around this.
The neighbors expressed concerns, and you know, it doesn't really provide to keep the children in because the driveway is open, that whole side is open.
Right. I mean, he definitely, there was a trampoline on the right side, there was a playset in the back on the right side, and he cut off his whole backyard, and I get it, he's got wetlands back there. There's woods back there, so he doesn't necessarily want the kids going in there. So having a fence in the front gives the kids a secure play area, so I definitely saw that. I just hope when the kids are old enough that maybe he'll take that fence down because I don't know that it really does anything aesthetic for the neighborhood. So with that said, who wants to read this resolution?
Sure. Appeal number 4117, applicant is Christina Delsavick. Close enough, I guess. A one-foot height variance and a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 58-foot high fence, or 58-foot inch.
Inches, not foot. Slightly, slight difference.
But anyway, high fence and the variances. Location is at 124 Sandy Pines Boulevard, Hopewell Junction. Excuse me. The resolution is offered by myself, Alberto Paratori. Whereas the applicant installed an aluminum fence without proper approvals from the town, and whereas the town received numerous complaints about this matter, and whereas part of the fence was installed in the town's right-of-way prior to the applicant moving in onto his own front yard, and whereas this matter is in the town's justice court, but it is currently subject to an automatic stay under the New York State town law, and whereas the applicant has stated that he needs the fence in its current location for the safety of his children, and whereas this is a Type II action under SECRA and no further review is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on August 21st, 2024, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 27th, 2024, and whereas the ZBI closed the public hearing and reserved its decision, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could be achieved by no other means. The front yard variance is substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Christina Deljazavick.
Delsavick.
Okay. For a one-foot height variance and a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 58-inch.
Inches.
Fifty, excuse me, 58 inches high fence. But it further resolve that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant and owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, item number three. So these are, we're now starting our public hearings. Item number three, Appeal 2216 Shenandoah Farm LLC, 270 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an extension on their soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms, which was granted by the zoning board of appeals on July 8th, 2008 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. The permit was originally issued July 8th, 2008 and renewed through October 27th, 2024. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening. So we had an opportunity to just get an update last month on the operations. The building inspector actually went and did an inspection. There's no open violations on the property. It's operating with all of the appropriate soil and stormwater management and everything else. There have been no complaints on the property. Your DEC permit was renewed. So any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No.
I'm good.
Anything else you want to?
No.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Shenandoah Farms to extend their soil mining permit for another two years? Hi.
Hello. I'm Teresa Daley, 155 Jackson Road, and I am for and support the extension for the request for the soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms.
Thank you for coming. Yep, if you don't mind, if you could write your name on the clipboard that's there, just so we have it for the record. Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution?
Sure. Appeal number 2216, applicant is Shenandoah Farm LLC. It's for a two-year soil mining special permit renewal pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Location is 269 Jackson Road in Hopewell Junction, and resolution is being offered by zoning board member Lee Rocco Limetone. Whereas the applicant was first granted a soil mining special permit on July 8th of 2008 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance for the land excavation and filling. And whereas the special permit was most recently extended to October 27th of 2024. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 24th, 2024. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 18th of 2024. Whereas this is a Type II action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, and no further review is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for a two-year renewal for the soil mining special permit pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the applicant obtaining a renewal for the special permit in two years and all conditions from prior decisions and orders remaining in effect. In addition, the special permit shall only be effective as long as the applicant has all the required permits from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. You're all set.
Congratulations.
We'll see you in two years. He says with a smile. All right, item number four, Appeal 4122, Susan Brophy, 34 Larchmont Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot sideline variance for an existing six-foot fence on the property line pursuant, it's not an existing fence, nope, for a proposed. Okay. On the property line pursuant to Section 194-98 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so we had an opportunity to review this last month. The building inspector has gone out to the property as well, so your board members should have pictures of what's going on over there. There's a reason we put, the Town Code says the fences should be two feet in, and that's really so that you can, you as the property owner can maintain the fence on the other side. In this case, you unfortunately have a neighbor who has a fence on their property line. They also have a shed, what appears to be a shed on the property line, because I saw this morning, there are stakes out. I walk by this property all the time. So there are actually survey stakes out, and it looks.
Which we put in. Just so when we did the.
Well, you didn't put them in. You had a surveyor put them in, I'm sure.
Yes, so that we knew what we were.
Right, and so there's a, your neighbor's shed is on the property line. Their fence that's falling down is on the property line, and the vegetation overgrowth is right to that property line, you know, and it's certainly difficult for you to. So your concern was that if you put the fence two feet in, your neighbor's just going to use that two feet to.
As exactly what it is.
Even though you would have the right to go on that property and not to go on your property and maintain your fence and maintain that property.
Yes.
But you've mentioned that they have a dog next door, and so you were concerned about that. And you know, frankly, there's a truck in the driveway next door that looks like it's being used as a dumpster. There's.
There's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
A lot of issues that I would not living, I would not want living next door to me.
I don't either, but that's.
Yeah, so I understand. What I needed to understand was how far up? How, are you going to go past the front of your house? How far was the fence going, the six-foot fence going to go up? Because there's a point on their property where they're.
Because that's.
It stops, the mess stops.
Well, so off of where the chain link fence is off the back of the house, it's just going to extend.
Off of the back of the house, okay.
Off the back of the house, just going to extend over. So the chain link fence will come down, the white fence will go up.
Okay, so.
And just into the property line. So that this way it will kind of cover hopefully some of that.
Yes, okay, so again, just as a reminder what we talked about last month, there's a whole host of fences on this property. I know, the former owner put up one. There's even two pieces of stockade fence that's literally falling down around your coverage.
Yes.
You know, there's chain link, there's like fence that's just staking around. And I can see this just walking by on Larchmont Drive. I didn't even have to be on the property. So people can see that because you know, you've got a lot of frontage, it's wide open. Your house is beautifully maintained. So it's, I certainly don't think it's a reflection on you that it is what it is. You're trying to fix it, okay?
And it's really once we took the trees down, it just.
Yeah, you had a tree fell down, right? Two trees fell down, and then, yeah, so as you're cleaning it up, all of a sudden it's really becoming obvious that there's a problem there. So again, normally we would not recommend or you know, hope to see a fence on the property. There's a reason so that you would be able to maintain it, but in this case, I'm not sure I, you know, I see your point that I would be concerned about them just using it as another two feet for them to store stuff. So again, everybody has a building inspector's report in their, you know, in their folder so you can see the pictures of what's going on there. So comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm good.
I am good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Susan Brophy, 34 Larchmont Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot side yard variance for a proposed six-foot fence on the property line pursuant to Section 194-98 of, and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appeal number 4122, applicant Susan Brophy, a two-foot side yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for a six-foot high fence on the property line?
Proposed. Proposed fence.
In this case, it doesn't.
Proposed, yeah, proposed fence. Location is at 34 Larchmont Drive, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Art Mahoney. Whereas the applicant currently has multiple different style fences installed at the property and wishes to replace all of the existing fences with one coherent fence design. And whereas the applicant believes that having the fence on the property line rather than two feet off the property line will promote more harmonious relations among the neighbors and prevent future maintenance disputes. And whereas the neighbor has a dog which may prohibit maintenance of the fence. And whereas this is a Type II action under SECRA, and no further review is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 18th, 2024. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 24th, 2024. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature, and the fence improvements will make the property look better for the neighbors. The desired result could be achieved by other means, including a four-foot fence, but that limited height would not shield the applicant from some of the unsightly vehicles and structures in the neighbor's yard. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Susan Brophy for a two-foot side yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for a six-foot high fence on the property line. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Now you just deal with the building department. Okay? Have a good evening. Yeah, you're welcome. So item number five, Appeal 4123 Reagan Zalvez, 10 Russo Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a foot, sorry, four-foot side yard variance for an existing 200-square foot carport pursuant to Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Aye.
So we had the opportunity to chat with you last month about your application. You have probably at least 125 feet back from the road. You have three structures. Two of them are sheds, and one is a canvas temporary carport. You know, and the code allows you to have the two sheds. So we're getting to the point where you need, and they all need the, that distance in from your side yard. But the issue became that a canvas tent or a canvas structure is a temporary. The code only allows those to be on site for six months at a time. And so what we talked about was if you really need the structure for your car that you talked about, then we should make it a permanent structure. Because canvas tents, they rot away, they disintegrate, you know, issues if they're not anchored right, you come into issues with storms and stuff like that. So there's a reason that the Town Code makes them temporary.
Okay, I'm good with it.
And so you agreed that you actually, you wanted to keep it, you wanted to keep that third structure. It's so far in from your property, I don't think it's visible from the road, but I didn't drive by this one, so I can't say that for sure. But like I said, it's at least, from my looking at your survey, it's at least 125 feet back from the property.
My goal was to not be obvious about having all the extra structures.
Right, well, and you put them in a line.
OCD with my property, so you know.
You put them in a line, so it really, all anybody's going to see is the first structure. They're not going to see that you have one, two, three all in a row. So and from a functional use, it probably makes sense to have them all right there. So you know, so I think your neighbors appreciate that you've done that, so. But we did need to make it a permanent structure and not a temporary.
I bought some pictures of some possible.
Oh, okay, yeah, because we did talk about what would you have it look like? Just so we have it for the record, so thank you. What color? So what color are you proposing it would be?
Is it a carport, a garage, or a shed now? Because we had this issue last.
Right, well, we said we were going to wait and see what you were going to propose. So if it's got a garage door, it's going to be called a garage.
Okay.
And then there's the other two there.
Oh, he's very clever.
It's so bad, Lisa has a side door.
Okay, so it's going to be a garage. With a door in the front?
This looks like it's, the side door's on the side, not on the end.
Side door here, garage and a side door, back door.
Oh, okay.
So you bring the car from the front and the.
Okay, so this is the one you're leaning toward, or?
Yeah, I was thinking of putting that up for now, just in case at some point.
So we have 10 foot by 20, we have 12 by 20, and you have 12 by 24.
Yeah, I couldn't get, I actually like that one, but I couldn't find it in, I'm actually trying to get a hold of the company arrow. Because I didn't, I didn't show any online, or 10 by 20.
What's there now? What's the size of it?
10 by 20.
10 by 20, okay. So you're in the ballpark of what's there already?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So.
So I think we're going to call it a garage.
And again, are we going to.
It's got a garage door to it, so that's what's really going to be the.
Again, are we going to go with the size, or are we just going to go 10 by 20?
No, which is, he's got to figure out the size.
Stick with 10 by 20 because the cement slab is 10 by 20.
Okay, well, that helped, that's helpful.
Okay, so it's already a 10 by 20, so you want to stick to 10 by 20?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be one of these two guys?
Yeah, I think so.
And these are both, you know, this is 12 by 20, that's 10 by 20.
Yeah, I think that company does have the 10 by 20 as well. The other arrow, I couldn't find it, that's the white structure with the green trim.
So it's going to be a garage, okay.
So I ask for a favor. Can I give this in March?
Can you go back to the light phone? I think we're proposing till June. I think giving you till June.
June, okay, that's more than.
Because we got to let you get through the winter, and then you got to do it, you know, when spring comes.
Okay, that's great.
Does that work? That's what we, you did, again, for people's benefit, you did ask at the last meeting to not have this right away because winter's coming, so. Yeah, so I think our resolution is, gives you, gives you some time.
Does that work? Does June 30th work for you?
June, oh yeah, that gives me plenty of time. Hopefully there'll be no snow and I can get it done in March, April.
Right. Could be a mild winter.
We'll see.
All right, so if we could, do you need these back, or can we put them in the file for Jackie?
You can keep them there.
Just pass them to Jackie then. All right, any comments or questions from board members?
What about the other two sheds? Are they already approved? Are they already approved? Because they're also on the...
There's no issue with the other two sheds.
Because they were like 11, like 12 feet from the property line. One is 20 feet approximately, or 19?
Only 15. As the, as the code says, 15 feet.
Okay, but this shed is only 11, 12, 11?
No, I moved it.
Oh, you moved it?
Actually by myself. My friends offered help, but I did it by myself.
So you are about 15 feet away?
Yeah, it's 17 feet now.
17, okay. Then I'm good.
I think Anthony came out. Was it Anthony, or?
Yeah, Anthony.
I think it was Anthony.
Okay, so then I'm good.
No, I'm good.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Reagan Zalvez, 10 Russo Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot side yard variance for an existing, kind of existing, 200-square-foot garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations? A structure, a carport that will be replaced with a permanent garage? Seeing none, do...
Okay, so are we, in the, in the resolution, are we going to say existing, approve for existing garage, or are we gonna call it a, or a proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed, yeah.
Yeah, let's change it to a proposed garage, for the actual approval. This is what he asked for, hold on. You can't change what he asked for.
Okay.
So in the actual final paragraph, yeah, that's where you change it.
Yes.
Because he asked for a carport. We're not approving the carport.
Proven as a garage, because of the doors.
Right, exactly. Well, if we get that far, yes, correct. Okay, so is anybody here to speak for or against the carport? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep us all honest, dear. All right, resolution.
This is Appeal number 4123. Applicant is Ray Consolos, requesting a four-foot side yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and a schedule of bulk regulation for an existing 200-square-foot carport. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has an existing canvas structure, and whereas this structure would qualify as a temporary structure and could only be located on the property for a limited period of time, and whereas the applicant plans to install a permanent structure on the existing carport space to store a classic car, and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and no further action, no further review is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September, on September 24, September 24, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 24th, 2020, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the guarantee of the various will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could be achieved by other means. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Reagan Consolos for a four-foot side yard variance from a requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the schedule of bulk regulation for a proposed garage subject to the following condition. One, the existing fabric tent must be removed no later than June 30th, 2025. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz, Rocco, Alberto, Art, and myself, aye.
Thank you.
Your motion carries, or you're all set? Now you just deal with the building department. Not now, but, you know, when you're ready.
Do I come back to a hearing in June, or?
No, you're done with us. Just when you need, you need to get your...
When you decide what you're building, we can issue the permit.
Yeah, they have to issue the permit.
Yeah.
All right, no more public hearings. So the rest of our meeting tonight is just reviews, and I'm only seeing three people out there, and we have five left, so I have a feeling these next two are not here. Item number six, Appeal 4109, Elizabeth Schuer, 53 Phillips Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven-foot front line variance for a proposed addition pursuant to the schedule, to the section schedule, to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, how about that? Seeing nobody here, and they haven't been here four months, I'd like to have the board direct our clerk to notify them that if they're not here next month, we're gonna consider this application abandoned. Correct?
Yes.
In agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a second to that? All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
All right, good. Because they, this has been on here for months now, so.
Yep.
All right. Item number seven, Appeal 4116, Edrics Fontanilla and Shetradi Sundberg, 46 Harrigan Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot side yard variance for a proposed 600-square-foot deck pursuant to Section 194 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. I think that's the same thing going on here, right? I think the last time we saw them was June, maybe? I don't even think they showed up in July.
No, they did not.
So, and we've had them on the agenda since then, so.
So we make...
I think last month they told us they weren't coming, but.
They requested an August meeting, and then so September.
Jackie to give them one, so I make the same resolution, it's proposed resolution to have Jackie, our clerk, notify them that if they're not here next month, we're gonna consider the application abandoned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me just make my notes. All right, moving right along. Item number eight, Appeal 4124, Mike Todd, 167 Cranberry Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven-foot rear line variance for a proposed in-ground pool and a 44-foot rear line variance for a proposed cabana pursuant to, Jackie, the same thing, to the section Schedule of Bulk Regulations? To the Schedule of Bulk Regulations? I don't know if there's a section that you have to reference, but. All right, so this is not a public hearing, so this is just our opportunity, the first time we're having a chat with you about what it is that you're proposing here. So if you don't mind taking us through what you're looking for.
All right, yeah, so we have the survey in there, and then some CAD draftings of the proposed project from the, we're working with two different contractors, one for the pool, that's Albert Group that we're working with, and then Dan Gurey from Jaskeen Construction for the cabana just behind it.
Okay.
We tried to plan this to where we wouldn't need a variance, and to do that, it was sliding way over, well, if you're looking, if you're looking at the survey, to the left, towards 173 Cranberry Drive. Of the four neighbors that we have, you know, adjoining our property, there's only one that has direct sightline to our backyard, and that's at 173 Cranberry.
Okay.
So we were trying to center the pool directly behind the house to give us and them as much privacy as possible. That neighbor, Patrick Bell, said if he, he needs to send a letter of support for the project, he's happy to do that. And the neighbors on the back line, I know this is very close to the back line, what we're asking for here, but the neighbors on the other side at 36 Blackberry and 44 Blackberry, they can't see the backyard, not just because of the woods, but there's also a hill there.
There's topography up here. Is this Bobby Clark right next door to you?
Well, he's right, he's around the corner from me.
Oh, okay, right, because it says Clark is your neighbor.
He's down the hill on the other side of the street.
Okay, so I've been in this area, okay, go ahead.
I play tennis with Bobby. So, yeah, and Matt, Matt can attest to this as well, from the site visit, that hill, those neighbors on Blackberry Drive have to climb like a 40-foot hill to even see our backyard.
Right.
And when we got a variance to put on the screen deck that's marked on the survey, I took the blueprints over to 44 Blackberry just to show them, and he said, don't, I don't need to, whatever you do, I can't even see it.
Right.
Well, the plans are here if you want to. He's like, no, do what you wanna do.
Okay.
So it shouldn't impact either of the other three neighbors, either at 163 Cranberry, their houses much, is much closer to the street, they can't see our backyard either. So the only ones we were concerned about are over at 173, and trying to keep it centered behind our house to give us and the neighbors as much privacy as possible.
And so your only other option is to not have a cabana?
Yes, that's right.
So your cabana is 258 square feet. It is 12 by 28. But, so the 28 is the large part of it?
Yeah, and that...
Your pool is going this way, so I get it, you're having it along the pool. The 12 feet is what would reduce your variance, and 12 feet isn't significant, you know, it's like a standard-sized shed, kind of.
Yeah, that's what, we were looking at the, some of the modular ones that they had, and that's where we got the 12 by 28.
Yeah.
Dan was gonna build a custom one, but it's only enclosed on that final six and a half feet on the left, and then it's open space, just with a roof, we're picturing, you know, having some couches underneath, something like that, for the open area of the cabana.
Matt, anything else on the property you're concerned about, or no?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Well, now, let me, Matt?
No. Mr. Todd came in and obtained a permit for a hot tub that I found when I did my site visit.
Okay.
So all that's been taken care of, so.
And I do think it's kinda funny, your name is Mike Todd.
The Rainbow Pools guy.
Exactly, Rainbow Pool guy, but you're not Rainbow Pool.
I have talked to him before, very nice guy.
That's what I thought, too.
I'm not sure if he's the imposter, or if I am. Yes, he's...
He built two in a pool.
Rainbow Pool did my pool, so I can't, I can't complain.
They did our hot tub.
That was John and Ardra, that was, you know, that was a long time ago. So, all right. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good. The issue basically is the cabana is within six feet.
Right.
And the fence is...
But the topography of this area, I've been here, the topography of this area is so high that, like he said, his neighbors aren't even gonna see.
They have to climb up the hill.
Right.
So I'm good. Motion to advertise.
So, I don't see where this would disturb anyone.
Right.
With the way it's set up, so I don't have an issue with it all.
So, motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you need a sign. Jackie will give you your information about that, and then we'll see you next month.
Excellent, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good night, thank you.
Good night. All right. We're getting, we're moving along here. Item number nine, Appeal 4125, Paul. I hate to mispronounce anybody's name, so, go ahead.
Michael O'Jack.
Michael O'Jack, that's not so bad. Okay. So Paul Michael O'Jack, 7 Gung Ho Road, Stormville, requesting a 17-foot sideline variance and a 402-square-foot size variance for a proposed 34-foot by 32-foot burst floor and a 12-by-32-foot second floor, total of 1,472-square-foot detached garage, pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. So take us through why you need such a large garage.
Well, my fiancee and I have three vehicles that we use for commuting purposes.
Okay.
Neither one of us are lucky enough to work in the community. She has to go across to Rockland to Helen Hayes Hospital, and I commute to Sing Sing Prison. So having a third vehicle, so without one vehicle is down, is a necessity.
Okay.
So that's why we looked at a three-car garage. The back of the garage would be, of course, used for lawnmower, lawn tractor, motorcycle, and tools, shovels and rakes.
Do you, does your house, does your existing house have a garage?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so that's part of the issue, is you do not have it?
I'm sorry, yes.
Got it.
When, when we became engaged, we decided we wanted to stay. There is no garage there, there never was a garage there, so we made the plans for a three-car garage.
Okay. So, the clerk, Jackie, are we here because this exceeds the 750 square feet and the 60% footprint?
No. No, he needs both.
I think he needs the size.
He needs a 722, yeah, 722 size variance and a 17-foot side yard.
All right, so let's be a little clearer on that size variance, that because it exceeds the 60%? Because I don't see 60% of his, I don't see his, the floor area of his house. What is that number?
Only 108.
All right.
Floor area is 11, you have it on my report.
Got it, okay. I don't have your report here.
You don't have it?
Not here. I know you emailed it to me, but I don't have it.
First story dwelling is 1144, 60% is 686.
Yeah.
It's the larger of that, or 750, so he's allowed 750. To get to the size that he's proposing, because the second story is 384, and 1088 for the ground floor of the garage, he needs a 722-square-foot size variance.
All right, so hold on, the original, his existing house is 1100 and?
1144.
1144. So, Paul, you are proposing a garage. What's the, somebody do 34 times 32, what's that calculation?
That's 1088.
What's the first floor? 1088, okay, so the first floor of your, the footprint of your garage is smaller than the footprint of your house. All right. 1,472 was worrying me that it was gonna be significantly larger than the footprint of your house, but that's the first and the second floor. And so it's a second floor is?
Storage.
You've lost 12 feet somewhere, 22, you've lost 22 feet somewhere on that second floor, so it's not a full second floor.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's just storage.
Yeah, and it, there's no residential, nothing, it's not gonna get heat up there or anything like that, right?
There won't be any heat in the whole garage.
Okay.
So it's almost like a loft?
Yes, sir, that would be exactly the term.
With stairs, probably, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Said you work at Sing Sing?
Yes, sir.
You the CO?
Yes, sir.
Could tell. My dad was the CO.
So, are there still existing violations on this property?
No, we took care of the windows, and also one of the sheds will be coming down.
Oh, okay.
And when, if he gets approval to do the garage, he's gonna remove a shed.
Okay.
That's kinda close to where this is.
And the pergola that was built on the deck is?
Pergola, I think we took care of, or we will take care of.
Okay.
The old cellar, that's also grandfather, the old...
Yeah, whatever that is on the survey, I couldn't even see that. It's somewhere on, on the property? It's right on the peg for the neighbor, below, at the watermark. I believe it was a root cellar? Right.
Is it still functional, is it?
No, ma'am.
Oh, it says there's a roof line on it, that's why I'm curious.
There's a roof, but there's no door.
Oh.
And it's a dirt cellar.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Let's see. So everything else is good on the property, then? Everything else fine?
Right.
Yeah. How old is your house?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. All right, comments or questions from board members?
So this frame shed that is about seven feet is going to the, that's the one that will be removed?
That's the one that will be removed.
Okay. So you can make a note that that will be removed, subject to...
The resolution should ensure that, okay?
Sure.
Give them some extra amount of months afterwards to get them through the winter.
I also have gone through with the neighbor, and I asked him before we even began this project in the spring, but he was kind enough to sign a document that he doesn't have a problem.
Okay, if you can give that to the clerk, then we'll read it into the record when we have a public hearing. So what are you proposing that this garage is going to look like?
I have a schematic.
Oh, that would be great, yeah. Is it gonna match your house, is it gonna kind of offset your house?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So driveway already there?
Yes.
Okay.
Blacktop.
Oh, I see why, your, your second floor usable space. There's 11 feet on each side of this.
Can we keep this far?
It's a little lift.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Paul, you will need a sign on your property, Jackie will give you the information about getting that sign, and then we'll see you next month, okay? And last but not least, Appeal 4126, Simtech, Stephen T. D. Cavan, 40 Corporate Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot sideyard variance for an existing propane tank pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. So again, first time we're seeing this, if you could take us through, 40 Corporate Drive, you are, you are a neighbor of Amazon, if I'm...
Correct, yes.
Okay, yes, that's Jackie. So there's an, there are, is an existing tank there now?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
So we put an addition on our building last year, and the plan was to eventually tap into natural gas.